Good morning. I want to welcome everybody that's here and everyone that's viewing on TV. Call this meeting in order. Let's have a roll call, please. Stand for invocation, please.
Shall we pray? Heavenly Father, we come this morning to give you thanks. We thank you to God for this day. We thank you for the activities of our land. Bless you, God, bless this, your meeting. Bless these, your people. Have this meeting to be as productive as you see. Bless all these blessings in thy holy name. Amen.
Let's face the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have a motion on the agenda.
Motion.
Let's vote. Presentations, Mr. Manager.
Yes. On the presentations this morning, we have a presentation of appreciation for service to Commissioner Charles Farley as a former member of the Pitt Sewell Water Board. We have Brian Evans, who's going to come forward and make that presentation.
Morning. Come on down front.
First of all, I'd like Chairman Charles to ask for, like, his sincere regrets for not being there this morning, but on behalf of the Pitt County Sewell Conservation District Board, I would like to present Commissioner Charles Farley as a flag of appreciation for his service to Pitt County Sewell Conservation District from the years of 2002 through 2014, and during which time he served as a board member, Secretary of Treasurer, and also as Vice Chair. greatly appreciate your service.
I appreciate that and tell Charles, for me, that I appreciate his patience with me on the board. I was the first member of that board that was not by virtue a full-time farmer, and over that time, I learned him a lot about agriculture in Pitt County, and it's important to the future of Pitt County. So those 12 years are going to serve me well on this board. Thank you.
Mr. Holder.
Morning, Mr. Chairman.
Morning.
Commissioners. In your packet, on pages two through 22, you'll see the next information concerning a report on the county's most recent bond rating agencies' report. As you are aware, we are in the process of issuing a refinancing of three of our existing bond issues, a 2004B issue and 2007 issues. In connection with that debt issuance or that refinancing, we have sought bond rating agency reviews to determine the credit worthiness of Pitt County as an entity as we have gone out to market. For the benefit of the public and possibly for our new commissioners, each local unit of local government has a bond rating indication, much like an individual would have a credit rating or a credit score. We are assessed by a series of measures to determine the credit worthiness of Pitt County. Before I go into some of the methodology that goes into those ratings, I just want to announce that we have successfully gone out to market on our refinancing, and we were able to yield a total savings of $2.7 million over the remaining 17 years left to maturity on our bonds. Very favorable pricing we were able to achieve, and it's really a tribute to our credit rating as well as the timing at which we were able to hit the market. So that was very successful. I do want to go over very briefly the presentation that we have, starting on page four. Want to talk a little bit about the elements that go into the county's bond ratings. There are, and what we have taken here, there are three credit rating agencies: Moody's, Standard &amp; Poor's, and Fitch Rating Agency. What we've done is, for a sec of time, is looked at one of those agencies, which is Moody's, to look at the methodology or the formula that's used to determine our bond rating. There are four elements that Moody's uses. Our economic or tax base, that counts for 30% of our rating. Our management counts for 20%. The financial strength, which looks at our financial reports or our audits, that's 30% of our rating. And then our debt level. Also, our long-term commitments, pensions, OPEB or other post-employment benefit responsibilities, for example, those account for 20% of our rating. Our current bond rating, which is on page five of your packet, you'll see that Moody's rated the county at an AA2 rating. Standard &amp; Poor's, an AA. You might hear these referred to as double A as well. And Fitch reaffirmed us at an AA+. All of these are reaffirming what we already had in place. So that means that we did not lose any ground, and we were able to show credit worthiness at the same level that we have been able to achieve. All of our outlooks remain stable. If you recall, Fitch at one time had taken us to a negative outlook. They removed that last year, and that continues at this most recent bond rating review. Some of the strengths that were noted in the reports, and all three, the details of all three of these reports are in the back of this presentation, so you can see the detailed reports. But some of the highlights that were touched on, and when I identify these strengths and weaknesses, there are some, it's important to note that some of these are within our control and some of them are not within our control. For example, the strengths that were noted in the report that were within the county's control were our debt levels. Each of the agencies felt like we had very moderate debt levels, and when they assess us, they compare us to peer organizations, not just in North Carolina, but throughout the entire nation. So they look at entities with similar profiles, whether it be our total budget, our population, some of the per capita indices that we have within the county. They compare us nationwide. So they felt like our debt levels were very moderate. Some of the strengths that were outside of our control, again, the tax base, they felt like we had a pretty stable tax base within Pitt County. They also felt like our taxpayer concentration was very stable, meaning that we don't have one particular industry or sector that we rely on for our tax base. It's somewhat diverse. We get credit for that. As well as our location, being strategically located between Raleigh, our capital, and the coast, they felt like it was a very strategic location, our geographic location. Moving to some of the weaknesses that were noted, the ones that they said were within the county's control is some reliance on unpredictable sales tax revenue. As you know, sales tax can fluctuate somewhat and can be somewhat unpredictable. We do rely heavily on sales tax for a lot of our capital construction and debt servicing, particularly around schools and education funding. They felt like that our reliance on that with it being unpredictable could be a weakness. And another weakness that was noted, although this was noted as a weakness, but there were comments that there was notable improvement, and that's our fund balance levels. I know this board has set an 18% to 20% fund balance goal for our general fund balance. Peer, our peer organizations, and even looking at the state of North Carolina, counties our size, the average is probably 23%, 25% in that range. So when they compare us, again, they're looking at that. They give us credit for meeting our goal, but when they look at the total picture, they're comparing us to similarly sized counties. And so they felt like our fund balance was a little low in comparison to those other counties. And then those factors that are outside of the county's control, our county income levels, the per capita income, which is something that we cannot control, they felt like when compared within the state, both within the state as well as nationally, was somewhat on the low end, our per capita income levels, our county unemployment rate. And also, they noted a softening of the housing market, and these are all results of the recession, particularly the housing market. But again, during some of our calls, there was some note to the rebound that is occurring. But as current state of affairs exists, these were some of the observations that were made by the rating agencies. I won't go into detail on the next few slides, but some of these recap some historical trends as they relate to our general fund revenues, as well as our taxpayer, the diversity of our taxpayer base. They look at our unemployment rates historically. We've got some five-year trends there, as well as a five-year look at our general fund balance, and then also some of our per capita data. Again, we're very proud of the rating that we were able to achieve, and I think our strong showing in the market was evidence that not only do we feel like we're financially stable, but those people in the market that were bidding on our bonds felt like Pitt County is very fiscally sound and stable as well. We were, the LGC Local Government Commission, mentioned that we were an attractive commodity in the market at the time. Pitt County had not gone out to market since 2012, and they felt like there were several bond buyers that were looking for some of our bonds to bid on. So those are all good indications.
Do you want to have any questions for Mr. Holder?
Mr. Chairman, I do have one observation. When I read through this, and you've already touched on this in detail, I was disappointed to see that one of our weaknesses was our fund balance after all of the effort we have put in raising that fund balance from the 12% to 13% level up to the 20% level over the last several years. But then when I look at the chart on page nine and look at our peer counties, frankly, I was a little bit surprised at we were the second lowest in our nine peer counties, and one of our counties is up around the 46% fund balance level. They need to have a tax reduction, it would appear to me, because that seemed, I mean, I think the 18% to 20%, our goal is a very reasonable goal, but 46%, that seems to be high. But anyway, we made progress, and I'm very pleased with that.
And they all said they felt like we had adequate fund balance levels. This is just in comparison.
Anyone else? So other counties having spare money was hurting us.
What's that?
Other counties having spare money was hurting us, though. Well, I appreciate the presentation. I think it goes to the commitment that this board has, as well as our staff, to fiscal stability. I think that's the best thing that we can do for the citizens, is be good stewards of their dollars. Doesn't make our decisions always popular, but it does keep us afloat, and it keeps us with positive outlooks. We appreciate your time in putting this together. Thank you. Get a motion on this resolution.
Send it.
Second. In the meantime, this was for Ms. Cheryl Rogers, who had 35 years.
30 years.
30 years with the county. She was not able to be here today, but we wanted to recognize her for her tenure with Pitt County Government and is another long-term employee that we're very proud of. And the county doesn't run, as we've said many times, without the people that are out there doing the work. So we appreciate her. We're sorry she couldn't be here today to receive the resolution, but nonetheless, we thank her for her service. Next, we have public addresses to the board. There's no one signed up. Is there anyone here that wishes to address the board? Seeing none, we'll move on. Mr. Manager. I'm sorry, Mr. Vickers and Mr. Banks. Or just Mr. Banks.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is John Banks. I'm a chairman of the Pitt Greenville Airport Authority. Mr. Vickers was a little under the weather this morning, so I'm here to drive by myself.
Drive or fly.
I'm driving this morning. The weather's kind of bad. Kimberly? We'll go through this presentation pretty quickly. If you have questions along the way, please ask them. I'll try to clarify as much as I can for you. There's four parts to the presentation. We're going to talk about flight delays, cancellations, fast facts on the airport, commercial air service, and capital improvement projects. Nobody likes their flight canceled. I'm one of them. I fly quite a bit, and during Christmas of this past year, we had quite a few cancellations due to weather. All were due to weather, either ceiling, clouds were really low, poor visibility and fog. Other eastern North Carolina airports, New Bern, Jacksonville, they had cancellations too. We had too many for our airport, but the weather's one thing we cannot control. At that same period of time, we had two charter flights. East Carolina went out on December 29th for the bowl they had. They were flown here on charter. The charter aircraft fly under different rules and regulations than the airlines do, so they were able to get in here on instrument approaches and get back out of here at the same time. It was kind of ironic. We had one of the airplanes, excuse me, being loaded, excuse me, being loaded and had 140 football players going out at the same time US Air was coming in, and this flight couldn't make it in. So the airlines have a little different rules and regulations on how low they can go to land in the rough ceilings and the air. The charter's made it in and made it out safely, so it's not always the airport's fault. Sometimes the charter operations fly a little less stringent rules and regulations than the airlines do, but it was perfectly safe, and they did a fine job. Chart shows how many flights we had canceled or delayed last year. And December was a bad month. Our fuel cells reflected that also, and the flames can't come in, and we can't fuel them. We don't close the airport. The airport stays open no matter what, but you can't land airplanes on ice. You can't land it on snow, not around eastern North Carolina. It's just not safe. We don't have the equipment to move all the ice and snow off a mile and a half-long runway. So we are stuck with the weather, and we're at the Bay of the Weather. We, some quick facts about the airport. We have 1,000 acres, two runways that are used. One runway is the instrument approach in and out, and we can handle large jets, but we don't have very many large jets come in unless they're charters, football, basketball, or some private charters. Normally, they're 50-seat regional jets. Probably most of you have flown in and out of those jets. They're not very big. They're very much more quieter than they have been in the past. The EPA is putting stringent requirements on hushing the jet engines down on the newer jets. So the jets that fly in and out of Greenville now are much quieter than they were 10 years ago. They may not seem like it sometimes, but the new engines are much, much, much more efficient fuel-wise and noise-wise. This shows an outline of the airport property, extends down to the river, north to the, used to be the Harvey Lewis property on the north end of the river, and it compiles about roughly 1,000 acres. These economic numbers were given to us by NC State about two years ago. We don't have the latest past 12 months, but you can see the direct impact of revenues in Pitt County and the surrounding area, indirect revenue, induced revenues for total impact. That's quite a bit, $97 million to the local economy. That's quite a bit. That's a lot of business, people traveling in, ancillary services like taxis, hotels, food services, and other things that people and employees of Pitt County benefit from. US Airways is our only commercial jet out of here. We have five flights a day, three jets and two turboprops. And we are constantly, as Commissioner Farley probably noticed in his first meetings with us, we're constantly talking about trying to get another airline to Pitt Greenville. It's never a subject that's not worked on weekly by staff, and Commissioner Farley found out that it's, some of the board members really pushed that each meeting, and we try to get the right mix and get grants to get us better airline service, but we're working on it constantly. We've been working on it since I've been on the board three years now. Passenger trends. If you look from 2009 to 2014, the trends are pretty much stay within 121,000 to 124. It goes up and down a little bit. The aircraft are usually 80% full, 90% full. We don't have a lot of fluctuation, a lot of really, I would say, real full flights, real empty flights. They're usually pretty full. If you try to fly to Greenville, you better get a reservation a little bit ahead of time. Capital improvement projects. Over the last five years, we've invested $20 million of federal and state grant money to improve the airport, the infrastructure, the facilities. We've used $2 million in the airport funding for infrastructure and equipment. That $2 million, we can't go out and just spend money on frivolity old things. We got to buy either fire trucks, equipment for our employees to be safe, improvements to the runways. All this stuff's done under federal mandate programs, just like you guys have to do with your federal and state money for Medicaid and different programs. We're mandated by the federal government, just like you are. We have no choice, sometimes do these projects, and we try to do them in the best manner as possible. Runway 220 Extension Safety Runoff Area. This is one of the projects that's been going on for about two and a half, three years. It was mandated by FAA. We had no choice in the matter. We had to have a, it's called a runway extension area at the end of the north end of the runway, and we couldn't go to the south end on Memorial Drive because it blocked us. We had no choice in this. The FAA said you will have this extension runoff area for aircraft, and that's what we're building now. We can't pave it until it dries out. It's been too cold, too wet, and you can't put asphalt down. But as soon as that comes up in March, this month, hopefully, we'll get that finished up before long. The area is $10.2 million project. We've voluntary bought property that was down at the end of the runway for two reasons. One, environmental or noise, and ones that went to RPZ area. Nobody was forced to sell their land. It was all voluntary. If people wanted to go into the program that were in that particular area that the FAA said we could do that, we made those offers. This shows the north end. You can see the extension of the runway, 670 feet. They're required a trapezoidal-looking area. That's what they're required to runoff safety area for is to increase. There were 16 houses in this area. I think it's probably one of the most impacted noise area. You'll see the line that runs through the neighborhood. That's a 65 dB line. That's 65 decibel line. These houses were the most affected at the end of the runway and were closest to the end of the runway. I think about half these homes have been purchased or under purchase contract, and half of them decided they did not want to sell. So they stayed in their houses. Several were in an underwater situation where they couldn't sell because of certain financial things they have involved personally. So all those homes listed there have been made offers either to buy out their locations or not, and about half did, half didn't. This shows the different areas. One thing that we had to do is called aviation easement. The height of the aircraft coming in, we want to keep them high as possible. In order to keep them high, we have to cut trees down to a certain level. In the runway area coming off the end of the runway, the air easements, the trees can't be over a certain height in nature, or the FAA says you got to land a different way. And we want the planes to be high as they can to go over the houses, so we have to cut trees down to keep the FAA happy. And it does not happen once every 20 years, 25 years. Trees grow at a slow rate, and this doesn't come along very often. This is a picture of the runway extension, and if you notice down on the bottom, there's a big, on the left side, there's a big ditch. Greenville Terrace has had a lot of flooding in the last 20 years, and a lot of that water can't not get out of there, and some of it goes through the city, some of it rolls into the county drainage ditches. And we spent $1.1 or $1.2 million of FAA money we applied for to help get water out of that neighborhood which is in the city, run through the county drainage districts, and hopefully that will help that neighborhood have a better experience when it rains. It floods over there pretty bad. We were aware of that, worked with Greenville Utilities in the city, and it's not a complete solution for the flooding problems, but it will move water out of there a lot quicker. Capital-funded projects, the corporate development. We appreciate the fact that the county and city worked with us on this project. Right now, the project's under design and engineering. Rivers and Associates got the contract to do the engineering, which they've been doing for the last two months. I think by April, May 1st, we'll have that project out to bid, and Rivers and Associates is handling the bid process for us to make sure everybody gets the same bid package and is built to the specs that the airport requires, FAA, and good practices for building aircraft hangars. This pretty well goes over what I just spoke about. Aerial picture of the airport itself. Any questions I can answer for you that I'm able to this morning?
Do you want to have any questions, Ms. Wood?
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you, ma'am.
I have some questions. I saw the picture of the depleting, the area that extends beyond the current runway, the tripod area that you talked about.
Yes, ma'am.
One of the complaints in the area is talking about that the airport may close off the current Belleville Highway, and I noticed on that, this is a good picture, thank you, for the coloration, that that tripod area does extend beyond the Belleville Highway. In other words, and it looks like there is a possibility of cutoff and blockage. So the community was told that that street or that road or that highway will not be closed off, but yet, one of the things you said is that the EPA talked about safety area and extension of the runway that would cause runway runoff. That's for airplanes, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, the concern that the community had was talking about closing that off and the runoff area. If a plane skids out, where is your buffer for accidents? Where is the safety feature for the residents in the area?
Yes, ma'am.
That's a great concern.
Two-fold question. The first question on Highway 33. The runway currently exists, every aircraft, I think maybe even down to a 747, could come into Greenville and get out of Greenville if they had to, safely. We don't need, as we as in the airport, and the FAA doesn't need to extend that runway any further for landing bigger jets. And that's a misconception a lot of people have in the county. 767s, the US Navy used to fly 767s. 767s, the U.S. Navy used to fly a 767 in here five years ago for the Naval Academy to come play football at East Carolina. That's one of the biggest commercial jets we have in, in the United States. It landed safely, got out of here safely with runway to spare. As far as the Highway 33, there's no plans that I know of now or in the future. We, we're doing a master plan that we spoke of in the meeting that we went with you last time. The 20-year master plan shows no extension of the runway for any new jets of any sort. The future of the airport's in 50-seater, 70-seater regional jets like we're flying now, and there's more than enough runway after this runway runoff area is made to, to be perfectly fine. The state of North Carolina has to remove roads. We have not approached the state, nor we will approach the state. Highway 33 was moved one time, I think maybe Mr. Owens might, no, about 10 years ago, eight years ago. That's a major undertaking. It's not needed. Highway 33 and, and, and the vision I've seen of the FAA and of the airport master plan, that would never happen. There's no, there's no reason for it.
Well, the concern with the community is not about bringing in new jets.
Yes, ma'am.
And bringing in, but the fact that that area that the authorities talked about, that area, the tripod area, extends beyond, and that sends a signal or sends an indication of a future possibility. That was just a comment I wanted you to hear, and because the public has been talking with me about it and bringing it up. And the safety feature of planes sliding off, recently there have been planes coming off the runway. So that possibility does exist, and there needs to be some protection for those residents that live in that area with this lane, the planes sliding off the runway. I just, I just want to make that statement because that's their concern.
When was any airplanes? I, I don't recall of any airplanes sliding off the runway.
Well, if you go to the news in the last two, well, I know we've had-
In Greenville?
No, not Greenville. See, you can't just use Greenville as the only evidence of something happening. You have to look at airports and what happened at other airports to, to consider possibilities. And with the internet nowadays, those people who do have it, they Google, and they Google where those planes run off, and I get those comments, and I just want them to know that I too am concerned about their family's safety.
Yes, ma'am, and, and if, if you were on an instrument approach, and Commissioner Farley, I think would know this too, if you're on an instrument approach like most of the airlines are during their flights into Greenville, they land coming over the top of the, the houses at that end of the airport and not coming the other way. On clear days, they may come either way, which the wind's more prevalent. But that runoff safety area was increased. If a jet was to land toward those houses, there's more than, there's probably a half mile of, of dirt out there that they would more, be more than adequate stop before it ever hit even Highway 33.
My final comment on this presentation, having to do with drainage and Greenville Terrace, if you look at the ditches and the gutters, they are blocked. They've never been cleaned. I don't know who's responsible, but that's a typical problem for our area. And if there's a tree growing that's tall as I am, and I'm four feet, that means that the root is eight feet in the ground when it's a pine tree, that would block and hinder the water runoff. So if somehow or another, all around the airport, you keep your ditches and drainage cleaned out, it might stop some of that overflow, and the water will run where it's supposed to go, away from those properties.
We, the city, the Greenville Terrace, I believe is in the city, and like I said in the presentation, we, we spent over a million dollars of federal money that we requested to help the city and Greenville Utilities and the people of that neighborhood to move water out of there into the county drainage districts. Is that right, Charles? Mr. Farley?
We, we have the Soil and Water Division. We have James Rhodes listening to these concerns. If there's anything to be done, I'm sure they'll be all over it.
And there, there was a meeting, I think-
Well, I just wanted to talk about that drainage because I haven't seen it cleaned out, and I go by there every time I leave my house.
Yes, ma'am, and there was a meeting about two weeks ago with the, Tony Cannon and the Greenville Utilities about that drainage problem there and the long-term plan that Greenville Utilities was working with, with the county drainage district and the city. It's a 20-year plan about drainage and runoff, and we're trying to be a, a good neighbor and participate as much as we can. Our water does not run into the city. All the airport water drainage from our facility goes into the river, and, but we're, we want to be a good steward and a good neighbor, and that's why we went above and beyond the call and, and had the federal government spend that money to help in that, that area.
You've not been good neighbors. Thank you.
Commissioner Hammond? Yes, sir, sir?
Yes. Is the, is the other carrier already been finalized? That you're gonna have another carrier?
No, sir. It's a yearly process we have to apply for, and it's a yearly process and getting a, a federal grant to help us entice the airlines to come in. We're, we're in the middle of that process, again, of redoing our application like we did last year and going to the FAA and approaching them to get that money to be a benefits package for the airline. We're constantly talking with our consultants, and they're constantly doing the applications and the process, but we have no affirmation of that happening. We just have to make the application every year.
Ms. McGovern?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I, I want to thank you, John, for the meeting that we had recently north of the river. I think it proved to be very beneficial, especially to the resident. One of the concerns was that the federal administration, Aviation Administration, came and did some assessment of the homes, some, I think about three years ago, maybe a little bit more. Some resident was saying that their homes seemed to be, should have been within that perimeter of being in the buyout. And I think I brought the question up as to when would we have another assessment of that? It's been three years. Would it be now that we can propose the federal government come back in to reassess some of those homes to, to, to see would they meet the parameters of being in the buyout?
Well, that, we approach them each year on federal grant money that's available for studies of that nature. I don't know when that availability will come up again. I'll, I'll talk with our director, Mr. Bickers, and see when that process will, will start over again. It's not done on a regular basis. It's done on when improvements to the airport runways or major traffic starts coming in, increased traffic in airline traffic, but I can check with that and get back with you.
Okay. And I think the final question was that, there were some questions that was, you know, sent to Mr. Bickers and the board as to, from the residents as to when their concerns, and I, I think we, we said to them that we would get back to them once the questions are answered.
Yes, sir.
Do you know the status of those questions now?
No, sir. Mr. Bickers is out today, but I can find that out for you. There were several questions that he needed to do some research on with FAA, and I'll make sure that he's got, asked those questions and they, they gotten back to him.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Farley?
Yes, Commissioner Webb, I would just like to praise John Banks for being such a hands-on manager. You don't always see that, where he can step in for the executive director and have such a, such a grasp of all the issues, and he's constantly working with the FAA, which can be very difficult. Their byword is, "We're not happy till you're unhappy." So I think he's doing a darn fine job. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Anyone else? John, thank you for your presentation.
Yes, sir.
I have one quick question because I got a little turned around during some of the comments. The trapezoid that you had drawn out?
Yes, sir.
Was that for runoff or was that for sound?
That, that's, it's called a runway safety area.
Okay.
It's for noise and sound both.
I got that crossed with the decibel levels. I just, I just want to get it straight in my head.
The decibel level, the environmental study for that was done specifically for the runway extension, 670 feet, and the 65 decibel level area, it doesn't go in a straight line. The, the noise floats in and out, and that area is a imaginary line FAA draws on the map and says, "This is what we need here," and that's the way it works.
Got you, and we are fully FAA compliant.
Yes, sir. We have to be. We take federal money, so we have to be compliant with everything they want.
That's all. We appreciate your presentation.
Thank you very much.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The Pitt County Fiscal Year-to-Day combined collection rate for real and personal property is 94.31%. The combined collection rate one year ago on real and personal as well as motor vehicles was 92.57, and this indicates a 1.74 increase, which you'll find in Section 5 in the second page of your collection report. If you'll notice too, this year, you do not have the registered motor vehicles factored in in the rate. They were in the previous year. And the reason for that, if you will flip to Section 13, is that we are not charged to collect those vehicles, and they actually send out invitations to renew. So what we've done is included that section so that you can visualize the revenue that comes in from that.
Thank you. Is there any questions for Ms. Booker?
No, I'd like to move for approval.
Second. Mr. Elliott?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 3 on the item's report is the 2014-15 Midyear Report for Performance Measurement. It's on Page 30 of your agenda package. Also, we've provided to you a bound copy of the Performance Measurement booklet, and this is the 21st printing. I think it's actually our 11th year, but since this is a midyear report, this is the 21st time we've printed this. And basically, for the new board members, these are basically metrics that we follow and measure within departments that assist us in knowing how the departments are operating, also assist us in the budget process in the springtime for knowing how to allocate resources to departments based upon work levels and such. It's a very comprehensive document. We are still working to reinvent our process and our document to take it to the next level, and hopefully in the next year, we will have this revamped. And we do have a companion document that is actually more user-friendly for the public. That's our scorecard that takes a few of the, the key measures in here and presents those for the, the public to see, kind of in a more flashy way compared to this is just charts and numbers. So that's all I have.
Ms. King? Does anybody have any questions for the manager before I move on?
Do we have to approve the report?
Motion to approve the report.
A second. Motion to approve is in order?
That's fine.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Commissioners and friends, we're excited to be here this morning to share with you some highlights of our 2015 Comprehensive Recreation and Park Master Plan. Rita Roy and James Rhodes are here with me this morning, and we've really worked as a team to enable us to complete this project. This plan does update our 2003 Comprehensive Plan, at which time you had granted us 32 acres of property on County Home Road, and this is about what it looked like at that time. Now, 12 years later, we're excited to have the County Home Complex, and as you can see here, that is an important point of destination for thousands of citizens in our county each week because we have the senior center, we have the park, the recreation center, the community garden, the animal shelter, the Eastern Carolina Village and Farm Museum, our farmer's market, and two elementary schools. This is really becoming a place to visit within our county. Everything that Community Schools and Recreation has done over the past 35-plus years has been about collaboration and partnerships. We work together with our county departments, with our school system, with our community partners, Vida Health Foundation, Pitt Partners for Health, and dedicated volunteers that come out to the park to do things like the community build of one of the largest playgrounds in Pitt County. For this particular project, we got funding from a community transformation grant through our health department. That enabled us to work with ECU and specifically the Leisure Studies Department in making this plan possible. So why is what we're doing so very important? A couple of statistics from Pitt County. Leading causes of death are cancer, heart disease, and complications due to diabetes. And when we look at the numbers for overweight and obesity, and we all hear things almost every day in the media about the issues that are caused by overweight and obesity, 2/3 of our adults in Pitt County and about 34% of our youth ages 2 to 18 are obese or overweight. A friend's physical inactivity contributes to each of these health issues and many other things related, related to good health. That's why what we do every single day in Parks and Recreation is very important. This plan starts with public input. We work with the ECU Center for Survey Research, and they developed a random-based telephone survey to households that would be represented, representative of Pitt County. We thought that was very important so that when, when you see the answers and the results, we know that's a representative sample. We also had a supplemental sample for the people that just wanted to give us input, and we had very good return rates on both of those surveys. So what do we find and what do we learn from those, from that citizen input? First of all, 84% thought Parks and Recreation were very important to quality of life in Pitt County. Our citizens also said that they help us, activities help us in maintaining healthy lifestyles. They told us that we needed to increase our public awareness with a marketing program, and overall, they had a high level of satisfaction for our program, our fees, our facilities, and the locations. 83% agreed that new recreation facilities should be developed on school properties, and of course, school parks are one of the key components that we have in Pitt County that enables us to have physical activity spaces close to citizens throughout Pitt County. Very important to us, and I know to you, is over 90% say that they support the use of county funds for Parks and Recreation. So we took our, our interest, our, our public surveys, that is, our needs and interest assessment, and then we did an inventory analysis of all the public Parks and Recreation facilities, programs, and parks within Pitt County. Now, that's very important to us as we look at grant opportunities for Pitt County, but it's also in the past been very important to our municipal colleagues, and we share this information with them as well. So what do we find out from that inventory analysis? Well, one of the first things we found out was the joint use of school facilities plays a key role, and, and you know that, with the facilities and programs that are available. That means that that original vision that the Board of Commissioners and the Board of Education had for Community Schools and Recreation and using school facilities across the county was a very, very good decision and serves us well even today. In fact, Pitt County was recognized by the Centers for Disease Control as a national model for the use of school facilities and providing activity spaces. Now, as we look at our neighborhood parks and community parks, we do fall a little short with the national standards, so that's one of the areas that we recognize we need to work on. Additionally, Pitt County ranks behind similar counties, and again, Mr. Holder talked about comparisons with similar counties, with facilities including softball fields, tennis courts, swimming pools, and soccer fields. Pitt County also ranks behind comparative counties in expenditures for both operations and capital improvements for Parks and Recreation. So we took the interest and the needs assessment, we took our inventory and analysis, and then what we tried to do, along with our colleagues at East Carolina and Recreation Leisure Studies, was to come up with some realistic recommendations in three different areas. The first, of course, was administration and funding. We need to maintain our partnerships, and that's just the way we've done business in this county, and we're so happy that we can do that. We're certainly going to continue that. We, we need to look at avenues for increasing funding for operations and for capital improvements, and we also need to continue to update our master plan and our site plans. What we then did was really took our short-term goals because that's where we want to go from where we are now in the next year, two years, five years, and we put that into a plan of action. We put it on a timeline so that we would weave the short-term goals into our plan of action. So what do we need to do there according to the plan? Continue to explore state and federal grants. I can tell you, we do that on a weekly basis, and we've been successful in Pitt County. Need to evaluate our fee structure. We need to update the Alice King District Park Site Plan, which threw another grant we're in the process of doing at this time. And one thing that's very important is we must ensure the maintenance of the park that we have now. We have a wonderful park with lots of county dollars, county support, and federal and state dollars, and we need to ensure the quality and upkeep of that investment. dollars, and we need to ensure the quality and upkeep of that investment. Also, this plan shows that we need the gymnasium in the district park. Many of you will remember that was a part of the original plan, was a gymnasium with the facilities that you see listed there. And this plan points to that also. We do need to continue to review our staffing as it relates to needs and interests that were expressed by our citizens. And a couple of the other things that we saw there is interesting is additional trails across the county and, again, the expansion of our marketing program. This plan says that we should continue to host special events in the park, which we love doing. Many of you will remember, we did the National Government Week a few years back. We do Family and Friends Day. We were one of the sites for the Pitt County 100 Year Celebration. So we want to continue to do those big events in the park. We also need to look at the addition of the greenhouse property to the park. That would offer some wonderful amenities and additions to our service to the citizens in our county. And we need to work with our drainage, soil and water conservation staff to develop a drainage plan because, as in most cases in Pitt County, we do have some drainage issues in the park. As far as long-term goals are concerned, we want to continue to work on connectivity. We talk to people all the time about adjacent neighborhoods to the park, the Windsor subdivision. For one, we really like to get connectivity to the schools, to the park, to the farmer's market. We also work with our colleagues across the county in making our communities more walkable and bikeable. If we can make our communities more walkable and bikeable, we can increase physical activity in people's daily activities. So we're going to continue to do that. Plan also says that we should continue to look at policies that would require developers to set aside parcels for parks, trails, or open space. And we should acquire land strategically located for additional park sites. Now, I don't know about you, but I know all the years when I was growing up, my mom used to say to me, "Our health is the most important thing that we have." And I can tell you, through programs, activities, parks, open spaces, parks and recreation, community schools and recreation in Pitt County are providing activities and resources that really touch the six dimensions of health: physical, emotional, spiritual, social, mental, and environmental. And we're really proud to say that's across the lifespan, from the babies that come out that are being pushed in strollers to our senior games participants, that our oldest one at this point was 101. We cover our citizens across the lifespan. What are our next steps tonight? Rita Roy and James Rhodes will make a presentation to the Pitt County Board of Education. Again, that vision, Ms. Ward, you know, 35-plus years ago was really key. Mr. Owens was, I believe, on the Board of Education at that time. That has been a key decision that has led us to the provision of many resources across this county. They will make that presentation to the Board of Education. We would hope to come back to you on March 16th after you've had a chance to look at this, review the executive report, and ask questions, ask for your adoption of this plan that will lead us into the years to come. Thank you so much, and thank you for all of your support.
Thank you. Is there any questions for Ms. King? Ms. Perkins?
And thank you so much for a very thorough presentation. And I served on the very first Alice King Recreation Park Board back in those days. And it was supposed to be to encompass the entire community throughout Pitt County. And you said in the meeting, in your presentation, that you fall short with community sites and efforts and that you encourage developers to have a place strategically located to the current Alice King Park. When you live way out and you drive more than 10 miles to get to Greenville, and you have to drive another eight miles to get to Alice King Park, that's taxing for the people who live in outlanding areas. So if the board would consider looking at their policy valuation as it relates to the entire Pitt County, then I think it would be really great for all of us to have an opportunity to walk and enjoy play, hopefully for our bodies as well as to keep from having driving 50 miles. So that is a comment that I think that I would be looking at in the future as it relates to development of recreational parks. The Pitt County School System encloses their playground area with fences. Is that still true?
I believe that what you'll find is, in some limited cases, playgrounds may have to be enclosed in fences. But for the most part, our playgrounds, we call them school parks, they're available for use by the community, encouraged use by the community in non-school hours. Now, I will say, in a couple of situations, there are places that, because of vandalism over time, we have had to enclose them. But by and large, our school parks are open in non-school hours.
If you look beyond the County Home Road schools, Wintergreen and those schools, if you look beyond that, I think it would be good for your board to evaluate the other schools in the county as it relates to their partnership. And you will find that that is not community-friendly in every situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garris.
The one question I had was, I know that you utilize the gyms at our various schools. And we have 36 schools, and I believe each of them has a gym. With 36 gyms, why do we need to build a gymnasium out on County Home Road?
Commissioner Garris, that's a very good question. Thank you for asking that. I recently did a chart showing the gyms, and most of our elementary schools do not have gyms. So I think it was 17 or 18 of the schools in the 35 schools actually have gymnasiums. Then, when you take with our high schools and our middle schools, all of their sports teams, it's very limited in the number of hours that we can actually use gymnasiums for recreation. So, and I will be glad to provide that information for the commissioners because I think it's a great question, and I think it's a question that probably a lot of people have in their minds. But high schools, even our high schools that have two gymnasiums, when they have, you know, varsity and junior varsity basketball team, they have volleyball and sometimes JV volleyball. By the time they fit their school activities in first, there's very few hours left for recreation.
Well, I just wanted to make sure that we are properly utilizing the facilities we have before we start spending very limited dollars on duplication.
Yes, sir. And the other thing that's so important about a gymnasium in the district park will be that gymnasium will be available 24/7 for recreation. And again, even the schools that we can get into, most of them are maybe a two-hour period of time from 7:00 to 9:00 at night. We have a lot of seniors and a lot of other age groups that really want to do things inside in a gym that we don't have access to during the day.
Okay.
A very good question. Thank you.
Ms. Ward. I'll get back to you.
All I wanted to say was, thank you again for looking forward in our quest to bring this sort of recreation and healthfulness to Pitt County. And the other thing is, many times, people that are aware of the elementary schools, they see the multipurpose room as a gym, and it really doesn't fit the criteria as the gym and is used primarily for PE classes during the school day. And it doesn't meet the... Anyway, it does tie your hands a little bit as far as the amount of time that you can get into the buildings. Thank you again for a good report.
Commissioner Wade.
Thank you.
I wanted to know about fees for gym usage and recreation park uses. Are there any?
There are fees if it's an outside group that's doing something that's private. But because our commissioners pay the utility bills for the school system and because of the strong relationship the commissioners have with the Board of Education, it's a dual-board sponsorship of a program over 35-plus years. When we use school gyms for parks and recreation programs, there's no fee. We bring in staff.
The reason I ask is because every time I call to try to use a recreation facility, it's $75 an hour. Unless I'm in the city of Greenville, then it's a reduced amount, or then it makes a difference. Because I live in the rural area, we have to pay for everything. And I think it's an unequal balance as it relates to funds. And I just want to say that, not to you, but to this board.
I would like to, if I could have a chance to meet with you at your convenience, I would hope that that's not community recreation. I think that that must be some type of private organization because we try very hard to make sure that community recreation, and I know the program is sponsored by Community Schools and Recreation, there's not a fee for using those school facilities.
Every time I have something, everybody can come.
Mr. Owens.
Alice, you've been thanked profusely, which was well warranted, for the many years of service you've given to this. But I think that you... I lost sight of community schools concept versus park recreation concept. When you come back with the totality of your plan, I'd like you to bring back where your sources or revenues are and fundings, where it's from Pitt County schools or whether it's from grants or whatever, and show me where your money's coming from in regard to what you expect to get from somewhere else. Money's a big issue.
Yes, sir.
You mentioned health and welfare. That's good, too. And Jimmy hit on this a little bit. I've heard from various and different aspects that we've lost sight of the needs of the community schools and activities within the school. Whether that's true or not, I don't know. But I want to know about the money, and I want to know about what's being given, like the areas Mary talked about, to the various and different areas. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Thank you for your presentation. Appreciate you coming. Mr. Holder.
Chairman, we have your commissioners, we have your January 31st, 2015 monthly financial report for the general fund. At 58.33% of the fiscal year, which January represents, our revenues have been collected at a rate of 71.2%, and we've spent 57.10% of our budgeted expenditures. In comparison to prior year, when we make adjustments for the revenue anticipation note, for the hospital note that we entered into last year, revenues were collected at 69.16% and expenses at 55.49. So we're spending right at 2% more of our budget as compared to last year, but we're also earning about 2% more in revenues. So everything continues to be in line, and we anticipate continuing that throughout the year and falling in a similar position at the end of this fiscal year that we did to the prior fiscal year.
Any questions for Mr. Holder?
Motion to approve.
Second it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Under the manager's report, item number six on the agenda, your next meeting dates for the next two meetings, March 16th at 6:00 p.m. and then April 13th at 9:00 a.m. Month of April, we'll only have one board meeting. Item B, and item C are just to announce to the board, make sure you have it on your calendar. The NCACC, which is the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, will hold their strategic planning meeting here in Greenville on March 5th. It'll be at the Hilton from 5:30 to 8:00. This is a meeting to help them work on their overall master strategic plan. This will not be attended by the association's staff. They're going to be having conveners from the school government that will be... They're having several of these meetings across the state. They'll have the school government staff there to help get input from the counties in the region to develop the update to their strategic plan. Item C, again, is the NCCC district meeting. That'll be March 25th in Martin County at the Senator Bob Martin Agricultural Center. That's 5:30 to 8:00 as well. On item D, follow-up to the legislative breakfast that was held on January 30th, Janice Gallagher, the county attorney, and myself have sat down. We've looked over the 14 different goals that were presented to our local delegation and have zoned in on three. Obviously, we're advocating for all 14, but three of them that we're looking at, based upon comments of you as a board and the delegation. Number five on the 911 secondary PSAP, we're looking at developing some initial statewide type of bill that would delay the implementation and establish uniform procurement standards and maybe define uniform standards for secondary PSAPs. On number nine on the list, which is the DOT responsibility for subdivision streets, we're looking at drafting a statewide bill as well. We'll feed this into members of the delegation who expressed interest. That one, we're looking to go to a study committee. Then the last one, specifically number 13, which was the delinquent registered motor vehicle accounts item, again, we're looking at drafting a local bill on that. And there's a representative who said they would like to champion that bill. So I want to let you know that we are actively pursuing all 14, but more specifically those three as follow-ups to the breakfast. And then the last item is a follow-up to the recent NACA Legislative Conference in Washington, DC. Item D was obviously state-level legislative initiatives. Item E is dealing with federal. This past week, the chairman, Commissioner McLawhorn, Commissioner Perkins-Williams, myself and the county attorney did attend the NACA Legislative Conference, and we were able to meet formally with three of our four members. And the fourth one, we were not able to, but we did have an informal meeting with them because there was an overall breakfast of all the 100 counties and all the members, North Carolina members in the Senate and the House. But we were able to, as a group, present the legislative, federal legislative agenda that had been put together by the State Association to our members and to advocate for that. I don't know if the chairman or anybody else want to make any follow-up comments.
Anybody want to make any follow-up comments to that?
I will say, I did chair the law enforcement subcommittee meeting while we were there. We focused on mental health. Our county jails, as we all know, are becoming the mental health wards for our nation, and our association is addressing that with our partners in Congress to try to move people into treatment and out of cells that don't need to be there. Mr. McLawhorn, do you have anything?
No, I just want to just echo what you said, that I attended that meeting, and they have what they call a restoration center now for these people, individuals with mental health illness and substance abuse, the nonviolent offenders, to help them to get treatment rather than holding out jails. And I thought that was a very good presentation, something that we might look forward and to at least pursuing to reduce the population of our jails. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
A very good tool might be that MAP 21 that they talked about, that the staff might look into, might be good for it.
Thank you. Is that it, Mr. Manager?
Yes.
All right. Motion on items of consent?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Dr. Linker here. Mr. Coles. Consent.
Social Service Board.
I've seen him come in.
All right, we'll move on, and if he comes in, we'll defer to him. All right, Mr. Dickerson.
Morning.
We are continuing to move ahead with our RFP for the radio system. It's actually, the draft is actually done. We don't have it in our hands yet, but we've seen parts of it. As we continue to work, we want to have representation from the community of users, especially fire and rescue, to help us make decisions as to what to bring forward to the board. These people know a lot more than we do about the systems, all the work, so we really need their input. You have a list of suggested positions on that committee, and we're seeking your approval for that composition as well as, as soon as possible, to name the two commissioners that we requested.
Any questions for Mr. Dickerson?
I have something, maybe somewhat off-subject. It has to do with locating people via GPS. It has to do with locating people via GPS. Recently, there's a news story on television where somebody was delivering papers, had a misadventure, went into a lake, called nine-one-one. She drowned, could not get out, they didn't save her because they couldn't find her. I understand that we have triangulation in Pitt County, which is not accurate. It gets you close, but it doesn't necessarily, certainly pinpoint. If somebody comes in from Nebraska or whatever, I'm wondering what would be necessary in order to improve our systems here so that if a person from Nebraska, or New York, or Philadelphia, or whatever, had an accident and called nine-one-one, so that they would be able to be, I'm going to say, receive medical assistance more quickly than what we might be able to do now? What would that entail?
I don't have a problem with saying that, I don't know.
Well, I-
Mr. Lee can't address that.
And what I think we need to do, as a county, we need to explore that and see where, where this might take us. I, I know it won't be a cheap investment in all likelihood, however, we're talking about a hundred and seventy-five thousand residents of Pitt County that sometime might need to use that service, and we don't have it, and it's available. Not all phones have GPS, I understand that, but they are coming. Cars have GPS, it's the new ones in them. It is the way of the future, and I think that now is the time for us to actually think about what we can do to improve our services.
Mr. Coulson, number one, for our cell phones, nine-one-one, where they receive that call, they get basically a tower hit. From that, they rebid it, they'll get it down to a nine-meter area.
I would-
Which still is-
I would be surprised they could get it within nine meters. They did some studies in this article where they actually went out in some of the more sophisticated areas, from what I understood, and they went into the nine-one-one area that, where the, the communication center, and they came within a quarter mile of that. They, and the point being, they couldn't find them. And I'm not sure that triangulation is going to get quite that close. Nine meters? I'd, I'd have to have that proven to me.
Well, that's, that's based on what they tell us.
They may tell you that, but I don't believe it. GPS is within a few feet.
And as far as phones, anybody that's renewed a plan in any recent years, they do have GPS on them.
I understand.
It's the very old phones that do not.
Yeah, but most people don't have landlines anymore.
That's correct.
And, and so now they're carrying their phones with them. And my point is, is they could utilize that phone anywhere, and it'd be nice if we would be able to pick up off of a, a phone, or a car, or something. I mean, you take General Motors and their, I can't think what the thing is, my daughter's got it.
Onstart.
Yeah, yeah, and-
I think serious.
And, you know, i- if she gets into, where she slams on her brakes hard, is they call, "Are you okay?" And so I know the technology is out there. What we need to do is think about what we can do to actually get there.
And I think we'll explore that again by-
I would appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Williams?
I, I, I'd like to add on to what Commissioner Coulson said. If I use my, I, when I became elected, my flip phone wasn't good enough for my family, and they gave me one of these four gig something. And I can't even make a call when I go to telephone. I, I use Scout, I use the GPS on my phone, and I have a car GPS that I call German that I bought, they bought for me at Best Buy. And I still can't get where I need to go if I don't know the exact place that the person is calling about. So it is a problem, and we have a lot of people coming in from out of state, living here too. It's a very, I think he took a very well position that I said.
It don't work.
Well, it don't work through the, whatever, they definitely need to check it out.
Thank you. Mr. Owens?
Mr. Chairman, in regards to the information that Phil gave us, I think we've had so many problems with the totality of this issue, that if there's anything we can find that will help resolve the problem, that that's what we need to do. This attempt to establish a committee that is on the scene, working where the problems were, ought to be at once to touch base and to make sure that that does not happen again with being part of this group. With having said that, I move that we establish this committee for the working group as recommended.
I second it.
Further discussion, Mr. Garris?
I would also like to add that once this committee starts meeting, if they see some people that needs to be added to that committee, that they have the leverage to do that. Because I want to make sure that the whole community, all of the resources are properly represented on this committee so that we can get the most accurate information we can to proceed to our next step.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, one more thing. I agree, Jimmy, and I was going to say that, there are some of the people here today, I think they informed me early this morning, they've got a meeting scheduled with Scott later on. Is that right, Virgil? Which is pertaining to this, but the point is well taken, Jimmy, that anybody that can contribute, we certainly want that.
Yes.
Thank you.
I've got a few questions, and Noel, you may be better to answer a couple of them. Will this group, this will serve, will this serve as a governance board for how this moves forward?
I think what it will do, Mr. Whip, it will actually take and make recommendations back to you as a commission.
Okay, I do like the composition of it. Are we prepared if this, the next move we make, if it doesn't meet expectations, are we prepared for next step? Do we have plans in place, just in case?
I'm not sure I'm following correctly completely.
If this is not the solution, if, if what we pay for this time doesn't pan out, are we ready to move on? I mean, I don't want to cast doubt, but I don't know.
I'm hoping with what Kimball is presenting back, with what bits and pieces we've seen, I'm hoping very much that it will cover the entire deal.
And I think they have a good track record, but, you know, we went in with full hearts last time and it didn't work out. Are we going to provide additional training to how the, the system works?
I would think that will be part of that, yes, sir.
To make sure everyone's up to date. All right. And will the policies and procedures be adopted prior to?
It should be, yes, sir.
And they'll be available, like for made-day procedures, and everyone will have access to those immediately? And my, my last question is, if, if we've got this thing built, and we do get it working, are we going to have other emergency services groups, like let's say the city, or Vicent, or someone, will they be able to join up on that?
Currently, right now, we have what's called a partnering agencies. And Greenville Public Works, the town of Winneville, Public Works and Fire Department, they have already, are partnering agencies with that. Whether that policy would be changed, as far as partnering agencies, I think would be up to you as a commission to make that decision.
I just think we need to streamline. I think everyone should be on the same thing. That way, you know, patching over and everything with different radio systems is, I know it's available, it's just easier if everybody's on the same page and is operating under the same policies, just like the, the CAD issue that we're, we're about to put out. It would seem to me more beneficial if, if we all worked together and everyone was on the same kind of CAD. That way, there's, you know, because a lot of these folks work in different agencies too, so it would just for, nothing else other than muscle memory, knowing how one thing works, and knowing how calls are going to come out or go out, I think it would be easier if we kind of focused then and, and we all became one system, even though we're all different agencies, we're all doing the same job and for the same people. And, and as far as like the other agencies, are they having to pay a fee to be on here?
Yes, sir, they are.
Okay.
Only those agencies that are, that are partnering agencies. And I want to interject too, we're still going to have a, a Viper system that is used by, utilized by the city of Granville and Pitt County Sheriff's Office, which is different than the seven-hundred megahertz system that we're discussing, the enhancements are with the county right now. So even once the county's enhanced system is up and going, you still have two, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Lee, but we still have two different systems, even though they do cross-communicate, you can talk between the two systems, correct?
You can talk between two systems, but also they can actually go to, the seven-hundred users can go to the Viper system, but the Viper users cannot go to the seven-hundred system, which is what I think you're looking at.
Right. And what I'm saying is, if someone wanted to switch over and be on that system, I guess my issue is these are government agencies, and every tax dollar that comes from these other agencies was money that's already been paid also by, to the county by the taxpayer. They pay twice if they live in a municipality, for example. And, and so if they were willing to, to front the equipment, will we still charge them a fee to be on the system, even though the taxpayers in that municipality have already put forth the money?
And I think that would be a topic that you as commissioners would, would come back and discuss.
But as it stands now?
Right now, they would have to actually pay a fee.
That, that's really an issue I have with it. I think if, we, we need to move more towards unification. That doesn't mean getting rid of everybody's individual departments, but unification of procedure, unification of equipment. Because when it all, you know, if something really bad goes down, there's going to be a lot of people in the same place, and they got to be able to communicate, they got to know the procedures, they got to know what everyone else is doing. And so with, with that being said, do we have any plans for any drills, multi-agency drills and?
One of the things that we do have, and just to back up on what you're saying, is that most of your Viper users today, their radio is not compatible to the seven-hundred system.
Even after P-25?
Even after P-25, they can still talk on that phase one, but since our system's operating off of phase two, makes it a difference.
So if we had a disaster and there's a Viper agency there, all the seven-hundreds would have to switch over to a Viper channel?
They would have to switch over to that either or national public safety talk group.
That's why, to me, it just makes more sense if we can all be on the same thing. And because we can kick it around and everything, but if, God forbid, there's some kind of disaster today, it's going to be a communications problem.
One of the things that we do have, what's known as dipper disaster for fairness regions, that we do, every, every radio in the county has those, and that would be the commonality that you'd go to.
I'm just saying that if there's not, if there's not standardization, it's still going to be a problem. And we, you can, you know, tabletop it, you know, anyone can tabletop it, but if we're not practicing it, if it's not done, then it's not going to happen. You know, you play how you practice, and we're not practicing, it seems. And I think we need to do a lot more in the area of training, standardization of policy and equipment, and getting everyone on the same page. Because I, I don't know, and I may be speaking out of turn, we've got some professionals here, I'm just up here, but, that may think differently, but I, I just feel like it just makes more sense to me if we're all doing the same job, all for the same purpose of the benefit of the citizens, we should all get together and, and standardize the way we do it, what we use to do it, and, and at a minimum, at least be able to talk to each other, because the, the last thing you're trying to, because I've, I've got a Viper radio, and there's three different banks of channels, with thirteen different channels, and if I got to go to bank C, channel four, for a specific emergency, it gets a little muddy, especially in a stressful situation. That, that's my comment, so. Does anyone else have anything? Mr. McLawhorn?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Having served on this committee with Mr. Garris, the, the major concern that I have is that, that we listen to the, the EMT workers, the ones that's out there in the field, who has, whose experience is this every day, and we're having problems. And I think somewhere, somehow we failed in that regard. So I, I'm pleased to have a committee with these individuals on it and listen to their concerns and so that we can really act on it. I think it's for too long that we've, we've been tackling with this, this situation, and nothing has really happened in terms of making any positive gains. So I think now with this committee, I'm hoping that, that it would enhance to making this paging system productive and work, and that we, a- a- as, as commissioners, will save the taxpayers money. We've spent a lot of money on this, and we need to move forward and make sure that this operation is productive and working properly. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I'd like to address Mr. Garris's and Mr. Owens's comments.
Sure.
Certainly, we want to add members to the committee if needed, but we've already talked about among ourselves that even though these meetings don't come under open meetings law, that we will still invite anybody who wants to come, to come to the meetings and, and listen, and if they have a burning desire to have some input, then listen to that.
Especially in an issue like this, I think that's a, a great policy. Anything else? All right, we appreciate you, and we're going to take a two-minute break to prepare for another presentation.
A motion on the floor with a second.
Oh, sorry, we need to vote first, don't we? Sorry about that. Now that I've done what I was supposed to do, we'll take a two-minute break and prepare the presentation of Dr. Linker.
I love your comment.
All right, welcome back, everybody. We'll, we'll get back started. That two-minute break was on government standard time, which ran a regular amount of ten. And Dr. Linker, we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Chairman. Well, we appreciate the opportunity, commissioners, Mr. Elliott, appreciate the opportunity to be here and talk about a, a project that Pitt County Schools has been, we've been kind of working through this for the last year plus. Finance Officer, Mr. Cowan, who you know well, has looked at our resources that we have, our continuing resources that we have in place to help put this process into place. And then we've gone through our, our facilities committee, and we've gone through all of our projects, deferred maintenance, expansion items that we need to look at, safety, security measures, some other capital needs. Kind of prioritized our list. The Board of Education has approved that list back about October. We've had a few meetings with Mr. Elliott and gone through the process and what we need to do and how to bring this to the county commissioners, so we're here today. We certainly appreciate the opportunity to be here. I know we've got a big packet of materials to go through, so we're going to get, get to the actual items in our capital funding request. But first, I've got my finance, or finance officer, Mr. Cowan, you know, and Matt Johnson of our facilities executive director, he's going to take you through the projects, and Mr. Cowan will take you through the financial end and how we could see it and how we could work with the county to make this happen. But at this point, Mr. Johnson?
Good morning. Wanted to run through real quick the project list that we have. We've compiled, as Dr. Linker said, put together through the operations committee and the, and the Board of Education has come up with this priority list of projects that we want to do. We'll start off with some renovations and additions that we'd like to see and, and our top priorities for our projects that we want to do. We have shortened this down a little bit. This does not include everything that was in our complete package, but we, we tried to kind of narrow it down a little bit, get the, the big picture items in there. It still does show us a big picture of what we got for all over the county. One of the top priorities for the Board of Education is the phase-two construction project of Chicade. This is going to add five, fifty-eight thousand, five-hundred-and-eighty-three square feet with new classroom wings to include ten new classrooms, new administration area, new media center, and new gymnasium project. This project has been out there, kind of been in design and on the books and ready to go for the Board of Education since about two thousand and eight. So really, once we get the funding secured, we know where we're going, we can almost put this out to bid within sixty to ninety days and get this project started very quickly. That's why we're, we're hoping for this summer to actually start getting bid, the bid process out there and get this project started for phase-two construction at Chicade. CMF's floor joist repair, through our deferred maintenance logs and everything like that, we have found that the, the underneath of the EPS Middle School is deteriorating. That whole building is basically raised elevated concrete slab with concrete joist holding that up. You can see the picture, the pictures here show you, one is the one that, the current state of our floor joist there with exposed rebar, concrete's actually peeling, cracking away from it. We do need to get up under there, we do need to get this secure. The other picture is what it will look like when it's complete. We do have the potential to get in there right now and stop this deterioration and stop the floor from actually collapsing out from under it. We are safe right now, the longer we push this out, the worse shape this is going to get, and the, the more problems we're going to have to correct this issue. So this is a very high, high priority for us to get this project complete in a timely manner. Elmhurst multipurpose room addition. Elmhurst Elementary School is the only elementary school in the county that does not have access to some type of multipurpose room for the kids to go out and have their PE and recreational time, especially when it's cold, windy, snowy, rainy, that kind of thing. This is the only place in county that does not have access to that. So a priority for us is to actually go build one, put an addition on their multipurpose room. Thirty, three thousand, eight-hundred-and-fifty square feet addition, about a thousand square feet of office and storage space, and also a corridor to connect it to the main building, so we're not going outside, back and forth through to get out there. Again, we're hoping to start this project by the end of this year, get those people some, an area to go have their, air, ability to have PE class and, and stuff like that in inclement weather, as well as hold other functions in there. Lake Forest Elementary Classroom addition, we are proposing to add eight classrooms to this space, which are a total of twelve thousand, one-hundred-and-fifty-eight square feet, and hopefully be able to get the modular units removed from this space. This school has continually grown since it's been opened up. Right now, we're approximately a hundred and twenty to a hundred and thirty kids- been opened up. Right now, we're approximately 120 to 130 kids over capacity there, so we do need to figure out a way to get the capacity up at this school, adding classrooms onto this. The design is in such a way that classrooms and additions can be put onto this very easily, so that's a good part of this design and a good part of this building, so we can go in there and with the ability to do that. AG Cox Middle School, looking to do a nice renovation out there. The front portion of that building was built in 1935. It's time for us to actually go into that portion of the building, take it out, bring it back up to codes and get in standards. With this project, too, we would also like to add six classrooms to this space, so 6,500 square feet of new classroom and 28,000 square feet of renovation to the interior portion. We are aiming to keep the exterior of the building intact. We're sure we'll have to do some patch repair work out there, but we do want to keep the front face and the look of the building the way it is, kind of some historical preservation there. But that is a project that is a couple of years down the road, but it's something that we really need to look at, one, to get it up to code, and two, we're continually showing growth in that area of the county. Adding these seats there will be very helpful to us in the middle school range. Other projects will include Falkland Elementary School. Their multipurpose room is having a problem underneath their floor. We think it's some water infiltration that's actually getting up there and bubbling the floor up. We need to get in there. It's safety hazards right now. It's not a very good place to go out there and play, even though you can still hold activities. But the longer we wait, the worse it's going to get. We need to get in there, we need to pull that floor up, dig down, and find out what the problems are in that area, and continue moving forward, get that put back, and then open them back up for them to have that area as well. South Greenville Gym. South Greenville Elementary School is lucky enough to be able to use the South Greenville Recreational Gym, which is right next door to the site. They are undergoing, right now, talks and design for renovation of that gym. They've asked us, since we use that gym, or our kids use that gym on a daily basis, to partner with them, go in and help with some of the cost, offset some of that as they do this renovation work out there. We've had several meetings with them. We've come to some sort of an agreement on about where we'll be money-wise. Again, it's in our packet of what we're looking to put out there. But partnering with them, ensuring that the kids that go into South Greenville Elementary have that multipurpose room, gym, the ball fields and stuff like that, there at their disposal all day, every day, is something that's very key to us, as well as the Board of Education. Belvors Exterior Wall Repair and Replacement. Belvors' exterior walls basically are pulling away from the interior portion of the wall. This is caused by the wall ties to the interior from, to the veneer brick exterior. They are rusting away. It's water infiltration in some different areas, but it's the nature of that construction for the time. We have the ability to go in there right now and start pulling these down and start getting them replaced. We have done two small sections out there right now, but as it progresses and gets worse, we're going to have to really look at the whole school and work out getting these exterior walls done. We are in a safe mode now with them. We have done the patch and repairs where we need to. But again, the longer we delay, the more, the more at risk we're going to be for these walls. Safety and security items that we're looking at, front entry corridor for all schools. What this is going to do is basically put a wall and doors up between the front doors and before you can get into the actual corridors and just go through the schools. This is going to make our visitors go into the office, go through our check-in procedures. That way, the front office knows who's in that building prior to them just being able to walk through the schools. So this front door corridor access is going to give us that. Block them off, drive everybody into the office, check in prior to that. It's going to include building walls, adding doors, adding some fences and some other security measures as necessary as we go through. Other security measures, cameras in school buses. We currently have approximately 220 yellow buses in the fleet. Ninety of those buses have cameras. Twenty-four of those buses require camera upgrades. What this is going to do is allow us to take over half of the buses in our fleet and bring them up to date with our camera services, adding three cameras in each bus, viewing the students as well as the driver and out the front door. So it does give us extra security, extra surveillance in these buses, brings them all up to the same, so we don't have half the buses that are and half the buses that are not under surveillance with our cameras. School Buildings, we have 17 sites that have aging analog camera systems. We would like to upgrade all of our cameras in all of our schools to digital cameras, better resolution, better feeds, better reliability, more ability to actually hold and store the footage once it's done. So we have a lot of more options there, as well as six areas in the food service area that we would like to upgrade these cameras to. Site Management, Visitor Management. When a visitor comes to our site, we want to be able to take their information, run it through, do quick background checks to make sure that the people we are letting in our buildings, whether they're volunteering or whatever they're doing there, are able to be there. There are several softwares out there. We've narrowed it down to a couple. We would like to get the funding to be able to go do this, set this up in every school, so that every school in the county can verify backgrounds before they're letting people in. Access Control on Open Campuses. We have eight campuses right now that currently have several different exterior doors. It's not just go in the front door and then you've got all your corridors that lead all the classrooms. It's all broken up, different pods, different areas, so going inside and out is a big problem. The access control will allow us to control those accesses where we do not have to leave those doors unlocked, propped open, that kind of thing throughout the day to let anybody just walk in and out of our schools. And open a access control, card reader, PIN code, that kind of thing for these doors to allow the right people to have proper access in and out of these doors at all times is what we're looking to do there. Facility Operations. Our transportation facility apparently right now has four bays to work on our buses. That is almost, that is less than half the size of what we really need to work on our buses. Also, the campus that the bus garage is on has been, is not up to par where we need it to be as far as being able to park, store, bring in, have buses there. You can see the pictures here. We've got dirt lots. We've got old buildings from 1950s, that kind of thing. What we're looking to do with transportation facility with two options is, is we sell our current facility, use those proceeds, and go find us another spot and build new. Our second option is to take what we have and upgrade it. Upgrade our current facility, upgrade our parking lots, upgrade the areas around there to better serve our buses and our mechanics as they get these buses ready to go to go support our children, taking them back and forth to school. Deferred Maintenance Items. We are proposing some electrical upgrades, electrical upgrades at Aiden Middle, Walco Elementary, and Welcome Middle School. This is for changing technology needs, technology that was developed after construction, code changes, and aging equipment. We're going to bring in new power feeds, bring in larger services, modify buildings to bring electrical rooms and other rooms up to codes. Also going to be installing new feeder wires to all the subpanels, and also doing infrared scans throughout the building. This is going to help us later on as far as our maintenance needs and what we've got going in the building. We know where we, we know where we might have potential problems that we can attack before we do have issues going down the road. Mechanical Systems to Upgrade. Chiller Systems, two chillers at Stokes to include all the piping, a chiller at JH Rose, HVAC units at Walco. We're going to replace the old piping mechanical systems with new high-efficiency single-zone systems. EBA Cock, replacing ceiling-mounted units with rooftop units. All of this gets us more efficiency, gets us better, better able to control the climates in the, in and out of the rooms and in the Traffic. We do have a couple of schools. One of them, DOT, actually brought to us Falkland Elementary. We are concerned about traffic that backs up and out onto our main roads. One, a couple of our initiatives here is to go create better traffic flow at these facilities, Falkland Elementary, as well as Creekside Elementary. We're looking to create new entrances, add parking spaces, add new car storage, so when pickup and drop-off is going on, we're not actually falling out onto the main roads. We can actually get more cars on campus while they're waiting to pick up and drop off their kids. Track Replacements. We are in the position right now to go replace tracks. We've got three that can be resurfaced and repaired in the form they are now. We've got two that need to be completely replaced. The three that need to be resurfaced, it's a good time to go get those done before they get to the point where they have to be completely replaced. We have done two this past year. They look great, turns out great. The schools love them. It's a really good thing to do, get these tracks back up to par before we lose them completely. Once you get past the resurfacing repair, the price pretty much triples on what has to be done to repair and get these tracks back up. Parking Lot Repair, Resurfacing, Several Areas, Greenville Rose, Stokes, Bethel, North Pitt, Aiden Middle, just, just a few of them that we do have actual parking lot issues. Cracking, undesirable subbase underneath these, not the right thickness of asphalt, actually growing up through the cracks or weeds and different things like that. So there are lots of opportunities out there, especially these four schools, which are the, these five schools, which are the worst-case scenarios. We do need to get out there and actually start doing some additional things to our parking lots throughout the county. This is kind of a breakdown of what you see with all of the numbers kind of associated with what we've gone through in the slide. You'll notice that 75% of the dollar value is actually going to, towards our renovations, new construction and additions. The other 25% is safety, security, transportation, and deferred maintenance. That's what I've got for all of our projects. I'll turn it over to Michael. He can go through the financials.
Good morning.
Morning.
As you've seen, it's a very comprehensive list that Matt has done a great job of reviewing rather quickly. Now, I'd like to just talk to you a few minutes about where we see or perceive the funding for these capital projects could be sustained from. And you probably have one of those Jerry Maguire moments, you know, "Show me the money." Hopefully, we can walk through that and identify the fund balances and future revenue flows dedicated to Pitt County Schools by law that can be used to fund these projects. We have been working in conjunction with your county management, and I must say that we are blessed that we are able to have such a great working relationship. It really has been a pleasure for myself, Matt, and Dr. Linker to work with the county manager and a deputy county manager to outline the potential funding sources for the capital projects. And again, it looks at two different sources, the current fund balances that we've been able to build up over the last, basically, five to seven years, and the fact that we haven't had that many capital projects ongoing, as well as the future revenue sources. With the number one intention here is to be able to have these projects self-contained, sustained, and not have to look at any additional revenue sources outside of those that we are already projecting based off of future projected growth. The projects that you have taken a look at here, the $26 million package, would be funded primarily through a county borrowing. We looked at a couple of scenarios in conjunction with your county management. And the principal and interest payments would be funded from the following sources. You have your current existing capital fund balance. It's anywhere between 13.5 and 14 million dollars right now. Your Article 40 and 42 sales tax that's dedicated to us by state statute, as well as the Article 46 quarter cent sales tax revenue streams, as well as lottery dollars. The proposed capital projects would be funded through currently existing revenue sources. This would not require any additional revenue sources outside of the revenue streams that we're currently projecting. And under this bar, under these borrowing scenarios, the scenarios that we've worked and looked at with the county management, and based off the timing of the projects and when construction were to start, we are projecting that our capital fund balance would, would not decline below that of 9.4 million dollars, which would be a good thing, meaning that we've, we're allocating ample amount set aside to plan for any unforeseen issues with revenue streams. Aside from that, I would entertain the, you know, the county management to provide any feedback that they might have in how those dollars are derived and the revenue streams being utilized.
Yes, as Michael Cowan has said, we have met on this several times. I do, we did in the last meeting, we had to counsel because of weather. We did have Pitt Community College wanting to come forward as well to provide their capital improvement list to the board. The lion's share of their list, 21.9 million dollars out of, I believe, about 30 total is the, from the bond, the GEO General Obligation Bond Referendum that the voters passed almost two years ago. The balance or the delta in that, between the 21.9 and the 30 is what Dr. Massey wanted to come before the board to present as well. So there's, I mean, the board may want to defer until the next meeting to hear from Dr. Massey, just to be fair. But today, with the projects list that's been presented, it would basically eat up the balance of the capacity to borrow within the quarter cent Article 42 fund, then it would not leave any other capacity such as, say, for Pitt Community College. Just want to bring that out as a fact. Did point out to the community college that obviously they did have a GEO bond referendum that the voters passed outside of the Article 42 that we're obviously moving forward on. So just, other than that, we are talking about no, no tax increase for the debt retirement. There could be, there would be additional operating costs, i.e. for the Chicade School in terms of utilities and custodial and insurance, but that would, I assume, would be incremental and would not be dramatic, per se.
The only other thing that I would add is that, obviously, some of the things that we would have to take into consideration is some of the timing. And Matt has already kind of done a good job, if you looked on the slides, of the timing of the different projects. We would want to be very strategic. Were we to go out with borrowing to make sure that we were able to get out into the market at the most optimal time. Obviously, rates are at a good point right now, but all indications are pointing toward an increase possibly in the summer to late fall, or summer in the fall. So that's something else that we want to take into consideration. If we're going to borrow, we need to make sure that we get into the market while rates are still nominally, pretty low, so.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. McGolahan?
For the benefit of those that may be listening, the proposed capital project would be funded through the current existing revenue sources. Explain that, if you would, the current existing revenue sources.
Well, in terms of the current existing revenue sources, we're talking about the portion of the sales tax that comes back to Pitt County that's dedicated, set aside by statute for Pitt County Schools, as well as the Article 42 quarter cent sales tax that use the board has set aside for capital improvements for both K-12 and Community College, as well as any fund balances, whether it's in the lottery funds or the school system's own fund balances or capital reserve projects. So I guess bottom line, we're saying there's no ad valorem tax increase associated with this package of almost $26 million of projects that the school system is putting before you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Garris?
I have one observation, kind of a personal observation. I'm very pleased to see that on AG Cox renovation, that you are preserving that exterior. That has a lot of historical significance there in the community of Winnable, and has a lot of historical significance to me because I spent my last five years of public school in that building. So I'm very pleased. I know there was some discussion one time about tearing it down, but I'm very pleased to see that your plan includes preserving that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Owens, yes?
Mr. Allen, you're not making a recommendation today, are you?
No, sir. This was a presentation of information, get the board's input. The only recommendation was, was making was to allow the community college to come make their presentation, then decide where you want to go from there. I think just to be fair to Dr. Massey and the Board of Trustees at the community college, otherwise, there's really no purpose of them coming before you.
And that's what we've done in the past.
One more. On the transportation, this is like preaching to the choir. But you know the property you got out there is a valuable asset. If you want to move, that's another judgment that y'all need to make. But one time you had it up for sale, and I think I was a little pointed a criticism, because when I go bargain with somebody, I don't sell my property based on what it's going to take for somebody else to support it. I think that property is of sufficient value to put your garage anywhere you want to. But that's another judgment call. But having said that, in the fact that you have not made a recommendation, I think we'll wait to hear from you, Scott.
Any other questions, comments? Appreciate your presentation. I think it's good to note, too, that not every school system and Board of Commissioners has as good a relationship as we do, and we appreciate you guys working with us, and I hope you appreciate us working with you as well. And we look forward to, I guess, seeing you back during budget time.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, gentlemen.
All right. Next item is the Resolution modifying the composition of the Board of ENO. Ms. Booker?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Unless there's some question on that, I move that we approve it.
I'll second it.
Just for discussion purposes, just for a point of clarification, in case people don't understand the makeup, it's currently a five-member and two-alternate board. This would move one of the alternates to a permanent member and another alternate position to be the chairman of this board or their designee. And there's also, there's going to be some further things coming with that later, but we couldn't get it done properly, I think, in the amount of time that, by general statute, we would have to. As for now, this would just change it. I spoke to the chairman of that board, who was very happy and ready to have a commissioner's voice up there as well. We had a good conversation. And if there's no further discussion, we'll vote. We had a good conversation, and, uh, if there's no further discussion, we'll vote. All right, Mr. Elliott.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, item three on the item two decision, appointment to the Pitt Area Transit Board, you have a recommendation that Adam Leggett be appointed to replace Keith Lettsworth as a mental health representative, and Ellen Pace be appointed to replace Robert Thompson as the disabled-at-large representative.
Any motions to those?
Mr. Chairman, uh, I certainly would like to, uh, support, uh, Adam Leg, Leggett to be appointed to replace, uh, Keith Lett, I serve on that board, uh, because this is a specific mental health representative, and, uh, Helen Pace is, is appointed to replace Robert Thompson as a disabled-at-large representative. There's also down below there is a Stephen Manko to, to replace NASA Harrington as a great representative.
That's correct.
Uh, I, I, I certainly would like to, uh, say that in, in terms of diversity, there has been a member to approach me, that Russell Hemby, that would like to serve on this committee, I, I think that we just need to consider that in the future, that we'll try to get him on it, but these are specific, uh, areas of, of, of representation, uh, mental health, uh, the disabled, and the great representative, and they are actually specific for those, so, uh, I certainly would support that, but to ask that we consider, uh, more diversity in the future, that we try to get, uh, Russell Hemby a, as a native representative.
So, Mr. Chairman.
Should that, should that come available?
Thank you, Mr. McGowan.
Yes, sir.
We don't need a second on nominations. All right, let's vote. All right, next one is the Pitt County Fireman's Association.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we appoint, uh, Chairman Webb to replace, uh, Eugene James as a liaison on the Pitt County.
Second.
Fireman's Association Board.
Any other nominations? All right, next, we have the Vidant Medical Center Board.
I'd like to ask Scott Elliott some questions, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Scott, uh, from your letter here, it says, uh, motion to appoint an individual to replace Ralph Hall on the Vidant, uh, Medical Center Board, so as commissioners, we're free to nominate anyone who appears on the list of applicants, is that not correct?
That is correct.
Yes, and I do note, uh, that, uh, we have a District Two being vacated, Mary, that's, uh, been your district, and, uh, I, I intend to nominate Edwin, Edwin, uh, Congleton for that.
District Two being vacated? Ralph Hall is in District Six.
Pardon me?
Is he not? That's where he lives.
The information I have shows that it's District Two being...
He lives next door to me, so that's why I happen to know that.
Who?
Ralph Hall. Were you, you just said that Ralph Hall was in District Two? Is that not what you just said?
On page one twelve, it is, um, the information is referring to that he's in District Two, that may be incorrect.
That is what I have, that Ralph Hall was in District Two and resigned on one thirty.
And I'm in District Six, so...
Well, I think we're getting, I think we're getting bogged down in, in the semantics of it.
Is that overlapping?
The correction needs to be made, uh, District Two and Six don't, um, if this is the same Ralph R. Hall, then, and he lives next to Mr. Colson, he would live in District Six, so that, uh, adjustment needs to be made, but neither here nor there, he's, uh, resigned, and in this interest of time, we have a nomination on the floor, are there any other nominations?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Phil Dixon.
Phil Dixon. Ms. Williams, do you have a comment?
Well, now, certainly, our district need to be represented on this board. I know, um...
There's a William Jones from District Two.
Yeah, William Jones is in there. I was only saying that before, for a point of correction, because he lives next door to me, and it's, this is not correct.
Is it true that he is in District Two? Because Edwin, uh, Congleton does not live in District Two, and all of the, uh, members on these various boards, my, I had a, uh, separate committee to look at all of them, and District Two is underrepresented on most of the boards and commissions, and I'm certainly interested in seeing a wider perspective and a more involvement of the citizenry of this county to represent the district on these boards, and I appreciate you, Mr. Farley, but Mr. Congleton does not live in District Two, and, um, and Mr. Ralph Hall, he, I take his word for it, you know your neighbors, he doesn't live in District Two, and, um, I'd like very much to see, uh, if Ernest Lee is not appointed this time, to reserve him for the next time, but, uh, I'm gonna, um, go with that, Ernest Lee.
You, you're making nomination of Curtis Lee.
How many we got on there? They don't need to turn it up, what we got?
We've got two already.
Who is that?
Uh, Phil Dixon and Ed Cong...
Okay, I will draw my nomination, but I hope your board will consider him for the next appointment for this position. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, uh, we have two nominations on the floor, are there any further? All right, if memory serves, by rule, we take those in reverse order, Madam Attorney?
That's right.
And it's a simple majority vote?
That's correct.
Okay, and, uh, all right. So, so we're voting, um...
Now, I haven't had a chance to vote like this, tell me how to do this thing.
All right, we're, we're voting right now on the nominations, and you vote in reverse order, so we'll be voting on Phil Dixon first.
Last person nominated is voted first.
If he fails to get, to get sufficient votes, then we'll move to the next one. Mr. Farley, need you to confirm. Okay. All right, next is the appointment to the Fire District Commission.
On the Fire District Commission, we've got, um, Michael Dixon, Chief of the Fountain Fire Department is recommending Patricia Combs be appointed to replace George Bell, and if Ms. Combs is appointed, she will fill an unexpired term, which expires December thirty-first, two thousand fifteen.
Mr. Owens. Has anyone on this board been, uh, apprised of this request, other than what's in the agenda?
No.
I'm, I'm, I represent that district, and I have not been contacted by the Fire Department, and I know the person's name that's saying is being relieved or removed, uh, not having heard from the chief or anyone in the Fire Department, I move that we, uh, table this.
Second.
I'll second it.
Motion second, any further discussion? Let's vote.
Yeah, they did.
All right, Commissioner's comments, we'll start with Mr. Hammond. Mr. Hammond, do you have any comments?
No.
Ms. Williams?
Yes, I have some. I'd like to ask each of the board members to take a field trip of their own, get on Fire Tower Road, and drive north of Fire Tower, all the way across the river, so that you can see your comfort zone change, and, and take a little tour across north of the Tar River, and the Citizen as well, so you'll see why I'm so adamant about development and, and stimulating the, the district beyond the Tar River. Thank you, Chairman Webb.
Mr. Colson.
No comment.
I get it right now.
Mr. Owens.
Good meeting, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Ms. Ward.
No comment.
McGowan.
No comment.
Farley.
Mr. Chairman, I move that you close the meeting, having heard all your subcommittees with your gavels.
Second on closing with a gavel, will be adjourned until March sixteenth.